All right, we have seven P M. Welcome, everybody, to the regular monthly meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. We'll start with Rob.
Rob Horgan.
Next.
Kathy Roz.
Next. Melanie, you're on, right?
Yep, Melanie Jellin.
Uh, nobody else here, okay? Uh, let me, because John said he was gonna join. All right, we'll start anyway. Uh, I'll see, Rob is on. I'll see Melanie for Sue. I'll see Kathy for, um, who else we got on here?
Sierra.
Huh?
You're missing John and Sierra.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see Kathy for Sierra. Communications with the public? Anybody want to say anything? Okay, good. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three? Any comments on that?
I'll abstain from this because I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. Melanie and Kathy, any, any comments?
No, I, I think, um, you know, we're gonna address amending the, the motion regarding, um, Stoneledge Sam, so, um,
Right.
Yeah, so, no questions beyond that.
So you want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Rob is back on.
And excuse me, Russ, uh, Sierra is being, she's coming in right now.
Okay, so I will see Kathy for John. You can tell Sierra's coming on. All right, so we'll start out with Janet. Dennis McDonald, Six Baker Road, request for after-the-fact application. Julie, did we get an after-the-fact?
Um, you did receive. It was dated, uh, April second.
Okay. With a three hundred fifty dollar after-the-fact fee?
I believe so.
Okay.
And they did submit a map.
Okay, Brian, are you here? Anybody here for the McDonald application? Makes it hard because we did require that, and after-the-fact be submitted, and it took months to get that. Now we got it, but the last meeting their expert talked about, uh, protection of the wetlands by doing plantings and maybe a strip of lawn. But if they're not here and they can't talk to that, um, that doesn't help.
Well, I guess we'll have to suspend it until the next month, right?
No, we, we're gonna have to deny it because we're out of time. You know, they, they get sixty-five days unless they allow an extension, and nobody's here to allow an extension. So we'll, we'll put this on a burner, see if they show up.
Yeah, there's someone named Brian on. Is that not who you're looking for?
It might be Brian Neff.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sue is joining right now too, Russ, so.
Who?
Sue Fitch.
Oh, okay. So I'll seat Sue for, for Melanie. All right. This is why Brian is here. Uh, this is for Town Line Road, which, um, Sierra and I walked on a beautiful morning. Um, Brian, I heard you found another way in because I saw other ways in.
Yeah, it looked to me like there's a way to get in from Minor Bridge Road without crossing any wetlands.
Right.
There, there are a lot of wetlands on the site, on some watercourses. So I was working on a preliminary plan coming off of Berry Road. I actually walked the entire site. I realized there's a way to come in from Minor Bridge Road, which would require no, oh, and crossing.
It looks easier to build and stuff.
It's more of a straight, straight shot into the house site, no doubt.
Right.
Uh, so I, I sent a email to Connor, kind of recommending that maybe he should draw the application, come up with a different way to access the site that doesn't cross wetlands.
And is, is that what's gonna happen?
That's what I would recommend. I wouldn't want to propose a wetland crossing if it's not really necessary to access a house site.
Well, we, we couldn't approve it under feasible and prudent alternatives, so.
Yeah.
But he, but he's, he's not here to withdraw, right?
Well, he may want me to redesign the driveways coming right straight off of Minor Bridge, which would be probably non-regulated activity, which I certainly do. But coming off Berry Road definitely requires a, a wetland and watercourse crossing, which I, you're right, I, I don't see the commission approving that in any way, shape, or form.
Well, because there is a feasible and prudent alternative, I'm gonna, uh, make a motion to deny this application based on the fact that a feasible and prudent alternative exists. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Brian. We'll look forward to, uh, to a non-regulated, and again, we, we'll look for drainage, you know, on that driveway if, if it's required.
Yeah, understood.
It's where it meets the road that would concern me to make sure we don't change anything there.
Yeah, no, I understand. Makes perfect sense.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, do you want to back up to Stoneledge Sam or hold off?
No, no, Stoneledge is next. Let's, let's talk to the dog.
Okay.
At the last meeting, Jim Kelly was here to say that we approved an application stating it had, the fence had to be built by May fifteenth. Contingent upon what our, um, consultant came back with. And our consultant came back with, you can't build it till October, which sets up all kinds of legal issues because you can't really approve an application that's that wide open. Um, and that the commission has to make decisions evaluating what the consultant said, and can't go by what, can't let the consultant decide what, what the, uh, what the requirements are. And I agreed with Jim that we didn't want to get into a court case on this, and that we would go back and talk to our consultants and come up with something. I did something better than talking to consultants. I talked to hunters, people who know live and eat, sleep deer, and anything else. And I wish the state would allow them to shoot some bears because because they're coming into people's houses and killing our goats. But anyway, um, what hunters tell me is that deer have their young late April into early June. So they don't, they don't know where a May fifteenth date came from. And that they really don't start moving until, uh, until the fall. And Mike, our consultant, probably found that out after the fact. Um, but it's a, it's a large fence. It, it's, it's a lot of area. I, I think, I, I don't know. What does everybody think, given that information?
So I, I, I have a question. So that means the, the deer are born April to June and they hang out until the fall?
Around where, around where the birth site is. That's what my hunter friend said.
Okay. Is is, I have, I kind of a question on this. So are the houses, I don't, I don't even know, are the houses under construction up here?
I don't know. I, I don't think we approved a house yet.
No, there's been nothing submitted to zoning on any houses yet.
So I was just reading, uh, the minutes in it. Uh, I, I, I don't know. Someone mentioned that they wanted to get the plantings in.
Yes, yeah, they already hired a landscaper who's hot to trot, obviously. Um, they have a lot of money tied up in these plants.
Hmm.
And that, um, if we made them wait till October, you know, it defeats their whole purpose, basically.
Well.
I, I guess what, what I'm thinking is logically speaking, I mean, typically on job sites, you don't do the plantage until the houses are constructed. You know, so.
That's, that's, that's not, it doesn't matter, right? To us, we approved the planting plan, we approved the driveway, and now we approved the fence. I, I think we should just go with the original motion and not make it May fifteenth because the applicant may not have time. But at least start the fence by May fifteenth. I don't want to rush them because if we rush them putting the fence up, we're gonna do more harm, uh, to the animals than good.
I agree.
Right, and I think they started it, right? I mean, we approved it.
We, we let them put the poles in.
Okay.
So I think that the best option here, and, and I do have communication with Stoneledge Sam. Um, I think the best option is to let them go along with the fence and ask them as a, uh, respect for wildlife, to just, you know, take a walk with your four golden retrievers and, and, you know, move them out if you, and, and you'd be surprised, but walking dogs through the woods, they hear you way ahead of time, and, and they'll start moving out. I don't want them to rush the fence and closing in within two or three weeks when all these, when deer are being born. That's, I'm thinking of the wildlife, not really, um, that's what I think's best.
So, so having, just letting them continue with it right now?
Yeah. They started it, let them continue, don't put a hard May fifteenth date, because it's gonna make them rush it and, and close all, close all this in. I'm sure when you hire a contractor, as you know, Rob, and I know from this painter who came in here and just wrecked my house, they want to get in and get out.
Yeah.
And I don't want to make them run any harder than they're probably already running.
So, so, so let me just think through this again. Sorry, Rob, if I'm interrupting, but I think you're saying that, you know, okay, so there, if they're in there, they're, they're, you know, having their young, the, the, the fawns are being born, and we've all, you know, come across fawns, right? The, they get left in the tall grass as the, the, the mothers go off and, and find food and whatnot, but you're, you know, you could be two feet from a fawn that's laying in the tall grass and you don't even know it. There, there still is anything, right? But, so it's certainly not in Stoneless Sam's best interest to have all these fawns fenced in because then, 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 you know, he's, he's defeated himself because then they'll be eating his, his plants that are fenced in, right? So.
It's like building a garden. But, and here's the other irony. I talked to D E P and I said, there's nothing they could do. You, you, there's nothing against putting a fence up, but if you fence deer in, then that's against the law. So he doesn't want to fence them in because then, then he is gonna, he is gonna cause the state to, to, to get involved.
Yeah, so, so we don't have much choice other than to to allow it and encourage, you know, that there be a flush out, you know, once or twice, even as it's being put up to try to flush out whatever's in before it's enclosed all the way, or perhaps take down a section in late fall to hope that you can flush out the remainder.
No, I agree. I, I think he, and they should do it sooner rather than later. Just, just walk around with a bunch of dogs and, um, and I think it'll be good, but I don't want to rush a May fifteenth date. That's what I learned from hunters is that's not a good idea.
So why is the hunter, why do the hunters have such a different date than the expert?
Because the hunters live, eat, and sleep it. The experts read about it in books.
I think that the fawns, when they are looking for their moms, are pretty vocal.
Exactly, yeah.
I, I just think that someone uh, out of, you know, should police it. You know, that's all. You know, not that that's a wetlands issue, but I, I just think that, you know, someone should police that.
So when you say they're vocal, Rob, you're saying if you happen upon them, you'll hear them, but.
No, 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 they're gonna hide from the dogs. They're gonna hide from the people. When they're looking for their mom, you're gonna hear them.
Okay.
The fawns, you know, so if the mother's on the other side of the fence and it's nighttime and whatever, I don't know what happens then.
Yeah, yeah, they bleat like, like, like baby sheep. I mean, they're, yeah, I've heard them.
So we're, are we all in agreement that it just move forward? And we're not gonna, we're not gonna stick to a May fifteenth deadline?
Yeah, that's fine, but are we gonna have some deadline in place? You know, if it's not May for it to get finished, or it doesn't matter?
I'd say it's October.
Okay, so let's move on.
Jim, do you agree with that?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. I just, a couple of things to add, just in, I say all these things simply because I appreciate the care and concern that everybody has for the deer population despite my professional opinion that you have absolutely no authority to regulate keeping deer alive or dead, or where they sleep or live. But I, I, just to make you all feel better, number one, um, you're a subset of the D E E P. That's where your, your, your statutory authority is under the D E E P. The D E P has a, uh, its own information on whitetail deer, and it has an entire section on reproduction, and it says right in it that the mating of rutting, rutting season starts in late October, extends through early January. In Connecticut, the peak of the rutting season is the last two weeks in November. Fawns weighing from four to eight pounds are usually born in June. Um, the other thing I wanted to add is, we have, since the last meeting, uh, we were successful, you know, this got approved a month before, and it took a while for the written approval to get to us, but we were lining the contractor up then. So the contractor has been there essentially since the last meeting. Um, on April seventeenth, I had asked for an update about where they were. We've been very sensitive to this. That's my point. Although I, how I feel professionally about your authority, uh, uh, understanding how you feel personally, I share, and so does the owner. So um, they, they've done a lot. What I, what I wanted to point out to you, though, is, you know, one of the things I had to do, I admitted last meeting, I hadn't listened to the entire tape, and I went and I listened to it before tonight several times. Um, and one of the things that I had not heard, but I just would say today, Mr. Klein himself noted on his, on his visit that he saw little to no evidence of deer activity when he was there. Um, I think there's a reason for that, and I see Mr. Cody's here, which is great. Maybe hopefully he'll support me and not tell me I'm all wet, but, um, there's been a substantial amount of activity there. If anyone's driven by there and seen the size of the stone wall that's being constructed up that driveway, you know, deliveries of, of stone, trucks coming in and out with the beeping and the backing up, and I, 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 I respect the concern about this, but people have basically been there, I won't say daily, but weekly, and, and it's not an environment that I, you know, I, I'm not an expert, but with land trusts immediately next door, and I, it just doesn't, nobody has seen evidence of any, uh, does trying to settle in or even be in there. Um, and I really, you know, if there was little to no evidence of it when Mr. Klein was there, I don't think it's gotten any, there's any more evidence of it now. In terms of your uh, suggestion that the property be walked, it is being walked, and that perimeter fence in those areas are being walked every day because we didn't know if we were going to be allowed to go beyond May fifteenth when we started. Um, and so there was an awful lot of effort not to rush them, but to make sure that they got there and stayed there until they were done. And so whereas on April six, fif- fif- seventeenth, when I was asking for an update from the contractor, I was being told uh, by May fifteenth that they hoped that they could be, uh, you know, uh, have all the fence poles in. Uh, they, as of yesterday, reported back that they're now on schedule, and they feel certain that this is, I'm reading to you from the contractor. Uh, I feel certain we will, we can have all of the fence installed and all of the critter passengers in place by May fifteenth.
Well, it's good. It's all good.
Yeah, yeah, so I just, so I think leaving it alone is fine. Um, I, I, and that, I did, the only other thing I wanted to report back on is I expressed some uncertainty about this issue of, uh, cameras and as, as I heard it and as it was corrected, its cameras are a statement from the applicant as to how the fence would be monitored. Um, and the applicant has and will have for years, uh, both contractors and, you know, employees, landscapers and the like, and, and they can do occasional monitoring of the fence line. So I think that that it's not going to be a property that has nobody on it for weeks at a time, so uh, he's willing to just make sure that it's, it's monitored by people going forward as well.
Okay, great. So we're done?
I believe so. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Next.
Next would have been one oh five South Street, but that was withdrawn. So you have, uh, one seventy-nine South Street.
Well, on one oh five, I went and looked at it, and the stream after it crosses South Street is, uh, it's walled on both sides, small walls, done years ago. And then it comes to the bridge. The bridge goes to nowhere. I, I'm not sure why there's a bridge needed there because it goes into woods and then there's a property line and you could see the next door neighbor's kids playing in the shed, so there's not a lot of land that it goes to. So I called the applicant and said, look, um, the bridge has been pulled off its abutment, but just fixing the bridge isn't gonna fix the problem because now the stream has found a new course. It's, it's breached the wall, and it's now running outside that wall, which is fine. It's running both inside and outside. And it's running on the other side of your bridge, so you need an engineer. You need an engineer not just to fix the bridge, but to fix the whole mess that's there from a flood. And I guess he decided either he needs more time, but that's what happened. So he withdrew, withdrew the application. So the next one is what, what South?
One seventy-nine South Street Squire Farm LLC.
I'll step down.
Okay, you want to bring that up?
Let me get there.
I'll seat Melanie for Rob on this one. This is a proposal for a driveway with a, um, five-bedroom house. Um, I've been up there. There is a small wetland crossing. See where that fifteen-inch R C P is? Or it's proposed, I believe. I believe there might be a pipe there now, but. So, um, it's a regulated activity. Would you bring up the application, Julie, so I know? Single-family dwelling and driveway. So we'll accept this application, and we'll go out and look at it. And, and then the next meeting, the engineer called and told me he couldn't make it. Hopefully, the next meeting, he'll be here. There's no reason for him to be here tonight because we need to look at it. Okay? Any questions? Any questions for the applicant? Um, or you can't ask the applicant anything, but any questions, uh, for the next meeting? This is, this is the old Squire Farm with the, uh, with the red house right, right across the street from Squire Road. Um, this is a separate lot that is in the back. It's, it's up way back in the woods behind the red house. Okay, so we'll go look at it.
So, so I'm sorry, Russ, I'm catching up. So this is just, um, a single, a single dwelling? A driveway to a single dwelling?
Yeah. In, in the dwelling, the dwelling's not there. It's a five-bedroom house that's being proposed.
Okay, got you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Next.
Next up is thirty-four Old Roxbury Road.
This is new business now, right?
Yeah, yes. Um, with deck addition to existing house.
Got that.
There it is.
Hi, Brian.
Hey, Russ.
So what's going on at Old Roxbury? Is this the main residence or one of the guest residences?
Well, kind of one of the guest residents. They're, they're renovating the house. It's there right now. They want to put a wood deck on the back of the house. So if you look at the map, there's a, a spring that pops out of the ground, kind of, uh, uh, northwest of the house corner.
Oh, yeah, I know. It's right down the corner, yep.
It's a little water course that runs out of that. It's actually, it runs not all year round, but most of the year, so it's technically a water course. So that, uh, the deck they want to put on the back is actually within a hundred feet of that little water course. So it's, looks like it would be a regulated activity to me. Uh, that's why the application's been submitted.
Is there something special about the stack and the way it's gonna be constructed?
It's a regular, regular wood deck.
With sonic tubes?
Yeah, sonic tubes on the corners. Uh, not any more excavation than that, otherwise it's just making a wood deck. So it's easy to see the driveway's there. If somebody wants to go take a look at it, it's, um, it's very easy to see.
Okay, great.
And, and there's decking, there's decking on the other, am I reading this correctly? There's decking around the other sides of the house. This is just the back that they're.
Well, the only, the, there's a couple of little decks on the side, but those are actually outside of regulated area. But the one in the back rear of the house is definitely within the hundred feet.
I see.
So they haven't built anything yet, but it's, it's, um, it's in regulated area.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
You're welcome. Go take a look. I'll come back for the next meeting.
We'll be here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Okay, next you've got the, on John's report. So. Wetlands Enforcement Officer Report.
Let's go, John, hurry up, the sunset.
All right, well, those are the administrative permits that I issued since the last meeting. It slowed down a little bit. Um, the only thing that we really need to talk about is the N O B that was issued, which would be next. So that's, the activity for the last month.
Okay. All right, very good.
Okay, a little back history on the N O B. Back in October of twenty-two, I received a call that there may be some, um, some work within the regulated setback area. So I went over there and I discovered that they were rebuilding a stone wall next to their pool. Uh, there was, there was already an existing silt fence, so what we did was we gave them a jurisdictional, um, uh, 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 sign off, and told them that they could finish that stone wall, but if they're gonna do anything else in the future, that they need to reach out to me and go the proper course. Uh, two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, I received another call that there seems to be some activity in the wetlands area once again. I went there and what I observed was a new patio was built, and they had also cleared all the vegetation along a small stream that runs, parallel to the property line.
Is the patio within the regulated area?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, okay. Are, is, is either Alex or Laura Strauss here at the meeting?
Yes, we're, um, we're here.
Hi, Laura.
Hi, hi, and, uh,
John Piper.
This is John Piper.
Landscape architect.
Hi, John.
Hi.
So, um,
Yeah, so there was, there was premature activity as far as the cutbacks and stuff. But as far as the, pool terrace, we actually removed three-quarters of the pool terrace, before John was there, and there was a terrace on the north side that we rebuilt and reset, um, which was inside of the footprint of the, the walls that went, went around two sides of the pool, um, that John saw at that time. And, the timing of everything, how it all happened was, um, let's see. Yeah, John's first meeting, there wa- there was, um, talk about the wall, of course, but I also think I talked to him about that we removed, three-quarters of that terrace, which was no little thing. It was fifteen hundred and eighty-six, or fourteen hundred and eighty-six square feet that, we took out because the, they wanted more of a lawn around the pool. And we decided to keep the north side, which is the side closest to the wetlands, um, in, in that regard. There's three hundred and ninety-two square feet of terrace that remain.
It sounds like, it sounds like if you submitted an application, it would have been approved, and there's been no impact, to the stream, other than vegetation being removed, which it will grow back.
But what I did was I, I walked with my clients, and went through projects like, a meadow that we wanted to strengthen on one side, or make a meadow on the west side of the pro- or east side of the property, which is underway, and,
North side.
Yeah, north, um, northeast.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a long painter ridge. But when we talked about, other projects like, John, what can we do to help, all the vines on the trees, all the multiflora roses that we see encroaching on the pool equipment and, the bittersweet that's everywhere, I said, we'll be able to get, permission to do all of that stuff, and, and we'll take it on at a later date. This was a while ago, and I think, um, my guys were here working and doing removals along, Davenport, with the homeowners on the, on their wallwork, um, on the walls that were along the street there, that was just full of, of bramble and, the, they were there, and they, um, thought it'd be okay to have them, clean out the stream, um, well, not stream, that's what John called it. I think it's part of, a discharge from, the painter ridge out of a culvert, and it's, I think there's a better part of that stream that really does the wetland work. And then this one on heavy rains, gets, gets water through it. It's about six feet deep. Um, but never full of water at six feet deep, and then as soon as it's done raining, there is no water in it, but, it does have a lot of trash in it, that, um, that was removed, and like some of the materials that were in there were, tires, barbed wire fence, all kinds of plastic bottles and containers, cans, garbage cans, clothing.
Yeah, we get it, we, we get it. Uh, you know, maybe what you should do is, hire a soil scientist to determine whether it's an intermittent stream or not, or whether it's just road, road. But there is a pond there. So it sounds like you're doing all good stuff, you just need a permit to do it.
Absolutely.
That's what it sounds like.
Hey, hey, Russ.
Anybody, anybody disagree or have any? You know, am I going in the wrong direction here, or?
I, I think that there should, we should have some sort of map indication of what's going on, you know, where the wetland is.
Yeah, I, I think you should, you should submit an after-the-fact application, to do the work that remains,
Yeah.
including the work that's been done. And then we can act on that. We could waive the fee. There's a three hundred and fifty-dollar fee. It's not a fine. It's a fee, and the only reason why it's more than a regular permit, is we're trying to be fair to people who follow the rules and get permits, as opposed, opposed to people who, do things and don't realize they need a permit. They should pay a higher fee, that's our thing. So why don't we go that way? And in the meantime, uh, we'll, we'll come up and look at it. It's hard to look at, it's hard to, you know, look at things on a map. It's better when we see it, and then we could all get together next meeting and get this, get this behind us. Is that, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Laura?
Sounds good.
Yeah. Are you, do you live there all the time, Laura, or are you?
Yes, I'm full-time, and, and my husband, John Alexander, is, is also full-time, so.
Okay, so, um, would you leave your, email or phone number away for me? Uh, it's probably on, put it on the application. And then when we, when I get the application, I could communicate with you either by text or email, uh, and set up a time where we could come up and just take ten minutes of your time to take a look.
Not a problem.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions? Any, anybody have anything?
I have a question, Russ. Um, what did you say about the application fee?
It's three hundred and fifty dollars, which they should pay, but we could waive it if we find that, that, that's not an intermittent stream.
Okay, so you could waive it, okay, that's all I was asking for clarification. Thank you.
Yeah. And the way to tell if it's an intermittent stream is to go across the road, and see if there's a stream running into it. I'm sure road drainage also adds to that, but,
Yeah.
that's one way. If you don't want to spend money on a soil scientist.
Russ, I think, I think we can't, that we, we would have to have a soil scientist determine whether it was an intermittent stream or not.
No, it has to be a qualified person. That's only for wetlands. For intermittent streams, has to be a qualified person, and that person could be on the commission.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, if the person on the commission makes a determination, then the applicant, and, and the applicant disagrees, then they're totally within their rights, to hire a soil scientist or a qualified person. Most of the times, that is a soil scientist or a geologist, um, to make that. But let's go look at it. I don't want to have people spend money, just spend money, you know?
No, we want to, we want it to be done right, and, I mean, we even have like, where we want to try to do a little, a little bit of a buffer from, hardscape that's there, and to be able to, put some plants in there that, maybe can do some competition with the other things that are constantly coming there, and hard to keep at bay.
Yeah, the invasives are.
The multiflora roses and the bittersweet, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yep.
All right. All right, next.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, then we'll go back to McDonald, uh, Sixth Baker Road. Is anybody here for the application of the driveway? No. With that, anybody have any, uh, anything to say? That they, that they need to say on this? I'll make a motion to deny this application for a change of use, based on the fact that the applicant hasn't completed the app, uh, discussion, on protecting the wetlands with a buffer. The, the motion is made, uh, without prejudice, and we urge the applicant, to make it easy on himself or herself, and the commission, and not put us through the round and round, that Sixth Baker Road seems to like to go, and submit a new application. Uh, the three hundred and fifty-dollar fee on the after-the-fact on this one is not to be returned. You can submit it with a new app, regular application, with a plan, to protect the wetlands from the driveway, which was created without a permit. That's already been established. So hopefully, we don't go through arguments, because if we do, nobody's gonna be living in that barn. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Julie and Karen, basically, we have to notify them that it's been denied because, their, expert proposed a good plan to protect the wetlands, and that plan was not included in the application, as far as I can tell. And anybody see a plan in there that we talked about at the last meeting? No. So, that's what we need. And would you please notify zoning, that that application is, for a change of use has been denied by the Wetland Commission? Therefore, zoning cannot approve, that as an apartment. John, has that already happened, or?
No, they would have to get a certificate of occupancy from, well, basically from me, then John Blain, before anything could, anyone could move in there, so that's.
Right, so that can't happen until wetlands pass it, because this is a driveway that they're gonna use, for that apartment. And when we approved it, it was a barn for storage, and that driveway got created. They claim, because you, John, told them to do it, because you were concerned about, drainings on a zoning matter, but what they refuse to, understand is, that doesn't give you the right to just do it without a wetland permit. You have to get a wetland permit, even if zoning told you to do it.
Uh, that's not quite the way it happened, but anyway.
All right. Hopefully, they'll just do the easy thing, instead of making this a big deal. But, you know, nowadays, I'm ready for big deals. I'm kind of tired of it, so whatever they want to do. I'm getting, learning a lot about court these days, so it's all good. We're gonna protect the wetlands in this town. And people who refuse to understand that, are gonna find it the hard way, so, um, they need an application. And it's not asking for much, so. All right, is there any other business? No, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn? Nobody wants to go home?
Sorry, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I couldn't get off mute.
Thank you, Kathy. Second. Rob, you want to second that?
Second. Sorry, I couldn't get off of mute.
All right, thank you. Uh, we'll be in touch. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.